When you turn it on.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Commissioner Stanley, we see the words for Lord Lieutenant, High Sheriff, the wishful mayor and deputy mayor. It gives me great pleasure to welcome all our guests here today, particularly the Lord Lieutenant, Mrs Sarah Crowton, who is gracing this event for a second year running, which should make Swindon feel very privileged bearing if I, the number of mayor making ceremonies, wish her attendance. I also include a warm welcome to Mr William Wildwall Smith, High Sheriff of Swindon and Wiltshire, two separate character responsibilities. For the less knowledgeable, the High Sheriff among his other duties was required to attend all executions in the county.
So we get a right to come to Mr Mayor if you want?
Thank you. The appointment is for one year only, but in the past, Mr Wildwall Smith has underserved for a number of years. In addition to his present duty, he is also the Deputy Lord Lieutenant of the County. Ever supportive of many events in the borough, I give a warm welcome to our two Members of Parliament, Mr Justin Robinson and Mr Robert Buckland. My time will come to say a few more words later. Right into the business of the day. Welcome to all our other guests, our freedom if we are any attending, and our organ, if there were one attending, but don't look at any organ there. I have had an application from Mr Richard Heims and Mr Martin Ossen that they be permitted to video proceedings. I'm now seeking the councillor's consent to permit the recording of the meeting within the chamber and not within the public gallery. That means that the cameras face into the chamber at all times. Can I have take away on that please? Thank you. In case, and this is the good housekeeping point, there is going to be a fire. I advise that no exercise allowed to take place this afternoon, so if the fire alarms do go off, will you please exit by the two doors here, as my good cabin staff sign from telling you, and then go into the gallery through the normal exit there as soon as possible and congregate in the Clarence Street car park. Thank you. That takes care of my side of the business for a few minutes. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I confirm the following apologies have been received from councillors Paul Baker, Mickey Sewell and David Wood.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, council vote. Anybody else? Thank you.
Agenda item?
Agenda item two, to elect qualified person to be mayor of the borough for the ensuring of this whole year. Councillor Perkins.
So I'll take that, Mr Mayor. I would like to nominate councillor Nick Martin.
Name seconded?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second Patrick Martin.
Thank you. Councillor Williams to speak.
Oh, I'm really happy to start, so I forgot the correct terminology. You should address the chamber, may I this? I'm very, very sorry. Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, honourable Lord Sheriff, very sorry. I'll remember that for next time if ever I get one. Very, very sorry. And this will be as well. Ron Leonard, forget us. Okay, I'll let's nominate councillor Nick Martin. Nick Martin is not a stranger to anybody in this chamber. Obviously, he's been a long, long serving member of Swindon Borough Council. He's obviously a man from Moreton, a man from the north of England, like my wife, but not like myself. He is, you could not know this, he is actually a cockney, so believe it or not. Born within the sound of those bells, something that gets very quiet, but may explain some of his behaviour in the council chamber. I think the best part of the speech probably is best kept for tonight, but my experience is with Nick starts just after 1997 general election, when I found myself campaigning in Central Ward. And if you remember 1997, it was not a good time to be a Conservative in the centre of Swindon, in Central Ward. And I think I still, I still, I think you have, someone did it once too, but I still wear the scars, I still wear the scars to this day, as does my wife, and I don't think she's actually been canvassing since. But we met Nick in Westwinds in a much more hospitable place. And what we found, somebody who was actually deeply committed, a man of conviction, someone who takes his responsibilities very seriously, someone that over the years I was involved with residents association, it approached us, he worked recently in the local group, gave us all the support we needed at many schemes, this included popular schemes around sustaining local post office activity. He was there with us on the doorstep of Tesco's handing out leaflets and红包packards, something which I think the Tesco's management did not appreciate.
He didn't lie down in front of the board, did he?
He did, because he did not need to lie down in front of the board, because they saw the sense in what he was saying. So I think we should all wish Nick well and hope he can support the nomination of Mayor for the full year. Thank you very much.
Councillor Peakey.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. My earliest memory is very similar to councillor William or councillor Nick Martin. It was actually thirteen years ago I was first introduced to the Conservatives. And my very vivid memory was actually of a dinner I attended with councillor Martin and his wife Mary down in Norton. And it was a very nice thing, introduction to this sort of talking about, this is what happens. And lo and behold, the following morning, I was actually out knocking the doors and delivering leaflets in Westwinds at the time. I really, it's very much snowballed since then, and it's very much been the heart and soul of the council for a number of years. And we all kind of know Nick from the way we work with committees or the way we've been campaigning, and a very right of everything that we take place. So I'm fully supportive of Nick as mayor this year, and very pleased that the first time as a councillor, I'm actually able to second a nomination, very pleased that's actually Nick. And it's fair to say I'm very pleased to see this happen. But it's also to bear in mind that over the years, he has lived in various parts of Swindon, currently he's in Westwinds, but he was also risen up ninth at one point and actually represented, I can't say Margaret. So he's actually got a big history for the community across Swindon, and I'll save the rest for the speeches tonight. But I do hope that everyone in this chamber can support Nick, because he's very much a worthy contender for being mayor in the upcoming year.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, honourer guests. I'm quite comfortable in supporting councillor Martin and Mary to be the first citizens of Swindon for the coming year. Got a bit of advice later on. Nick and I were elected to this council in 1983, quite a long time ago, before people started talking about new ideas, being innovative, being vibrant. I'll be trying to remember all the adjectives that you used though, okay? Together, we persuaded our respective leaderships to support building a running track in Swindon. At that time, the nearest one was in Tidworth. We got it done, we made it happen, there was no fun there. But that says a lot about what councillors should be about. Less, we're all doing it and less talking, I think. I don't want to forget the advice, Nick. You're good at making jokes, but I recommend you test drive those jokes with Mary. Make sure you have got the heart, Nick. Have a good year.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, I too actually enjoy that, so congratulations to Nick and Mary, two great people. And of course, being a mayor is actually about a reward, I think, for a long service, and I think there's no way to praise a politician, it's due a reward. And also, Nick, he's almost one of those dialogue figures, because he's been involved in so many interesting campaigns. The Greater One Weekend, I think, was down to Nick to a certain extent, the idea of a roof for the new roof for the Link Centre, again, Nick was involved in that. And I also remember he had visions of people, and there was a great photograph some time ago about him cutting a [inaudible] chainsaw. And he had a, it was a vision like the Chainsaw Massacre. Maybe not appropriate for a mayor, but he does have that sort of thing about it. And there's also a recent story about a skate park, which I think had its own bit of controversy, but he's never shied away from it. But I share that advice with Dave, there's a, I'll take, I'll take an example, I was on the noon, on noon walk on the weekend, there was me and fifty thousand of them in, you know what it's like on a normal weekend. As a marshal, you stand there and you get incredibly cold. So there I was standing there, and I looked at my feet and there was two gloves. I picked them up, one was a silver glamour and one was a practical runner's glove. And I thought, fantastic, look at these in my hands. And there they were, the two right-handed gloves. I think they're really just a symbol for the mayor, you have the glamour, you have the practicality, you have to combine the two, not separate them. So there's the advice, don't do too many rash things, don't do outrageous things, but be practical, go down the right way. So a little bit of advice of apparel there. But Nick is no match to shied away from controversy, and I hope he can keep himself geared to go the right way. I think I can, and no better thing to say, Nick, I think you'll do a very good job as mayor and Mary, as your shared companion. I pray you all the best, wish you all the best for the future.
Councillor Peakey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Actually, I've written this bit before the last speech, just while I was going to comment about your speech, and I was going to follow up on this, and I'd rather test drive your jokes on Mary. I would test drive your whole speeches on Mary, or we both know another proof, we will happily do it for you. Can I just say, I know Nick for more years than probably most of us want to remember, getting on for twenty years now and having worked. Nick is nothing if not a committed politician. He will work for the people of Westwinds, which he feels loyal to. There is no one who will be out there battling for Westwinds, we see, as it's a constant that's been shared for many years of the Westwinds form. He's led it. It made people say, what does the Westwinds form work? It's because of the people behind it, led by Nick, who knows Westwinds, loves Westwinds, he drives Westwinds. If anybody who knows Nick gets him onto Westwinds, that's it, he is there behind us all in Westwinds. We've got a problem with that. There's one other story I'd like to say about Nick, which he doesn't want to come out, and apologies to my wife. There's another side to Nick, I'm not going to lie, like Mr Pastor. Nick, I owe Nick a great due thanks, he introduced me to Sue. What Nick didn't know was Sue and I met for the first time, introduced by him, went out, had a nice quad drink, had a rugby club, this is typical of Nick, because most of us know Nick was a very, very good rugby player when he was in the North, but at the Norman Counties, he used to play for Sale when they were still amateur club. He managed to totally utterly not realise Sue and I were chatting away, totally ignoring it in the corner. This is the only thing downside, Nick, you might want to take a little more attention to the people around you, because we managed to go to one classic rugby club and have a drink whilst you were watching your number two son, I believe, who was playing the tie, and totally oblivious to the fact what was going on around you. So a little more observation wouldn't go amiss, but I hope that you and Mary, and of course Chris and Mikey, who I know will be here, and that's very nice, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris you saw yesterday, very nice, he could be in the UK at the moment. So I hope that you and your family have a very enjoyable year and a very productive year as mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Being off the Conservative route, I'd like to wish Nick a fabulous year ahead. Like many people in this chamber, I'm only here because of Nick and Mary, actually. They came and knocked on my door a number of years ago and persuaded me that public service was something that I was really going to be enthusiastic about and should get involved with, and here I am today. So I think I should thank you, Nick. I'll let you know about the conversation at the end of the year. Nick, as everybody said, has been in this chamber for a long time, and I think we all consider that now is a good time for Nick to have a year as mayor. I'm sure he and Mary will have a fabulous year ahead, and I wish them success.
Are there any other comments, Mr Mayor? Shall we move to the vote, please? That councillor Martin, being elected mayor of the ensuing improvement of this whole year, although for fame? Any yes? Motion to cabinet. I therefore declare councillor Nick Martin duly elected mayor of the borough of Swindon for the ensuring of this whole year.
Mr Mayor, will you please read your declaration of acceptance of office?
I, Nick Martin, having been related to the office of mayor for the borough of Swindon, hereby declare that I take office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Swindon Borough Council in the performance of my functions in that office. Thank you. Congratulations, Nick, for your appointment. I hope you have a wonderful year. I know you've been wonderfully supported by Mary, and also by the chief of officers that will come across helping to speak the other room. It's fair. It seems like it's probably time for a brief speech, which seems like a good idea. I've got caucus notes, and I've had to see so many friends, and I'm so grateful for your support here today, and hopefully tonight plays wrong today. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, members of Parliament, the Lord Lieutenant of Wiltshire, the High Sheriff of Wiltshire, and distinguished guests and friends, many friends as well, and friends in the auditorium. Thank you for honouring me, thank you for the council honouring me here, and I hope to represent the people of Swindon on your behalf in the best and most honourable way as possible. And I thank you all for being here today, honouring Swindon with your presence. May I thank you, my fellow councillors, for this appointment? As I said at the moment, I promise to represent you and the people of Swindon to the best of my ability. Now, I congratulate my friend Mick Bray on the success of his year in office and the hard work that he's committed and the extra weight that he has put on. Some people have suggested I should be weighed tomorrow and weighed after twelve months. This could lead to a heavy financial penalty if that took place. Now, I also congratulate the new deputy mayor on her nomination, and I look forward to supporting her in her training year. And in fact, I think the deputy measure before the mayorship is extremely useful and very helpful. I would also like to note that I'm supporting three charities, being Hoxgibbon Job, which sounds very energetic, but in actual fact is a disability charity that is based in the Warders Shore and does awful lot of good for lots of remarkably disabled young people. Also, I'll be supporting Swindon, Two's Hill Junior Youth Club. The fact is, it's actually Two's Hill Farm is a slight confusion, but again, the junior youth club does awful lot of good in the Two's Hill area. On a Swindon-wide basis, I'm also supporting, I'm supporting Swindon Women's Refuge. And I won't be specific to their location, but they are in Westwinds and they are a very valuable, very valued charity. Across the board, if there's any rugby event that will actually raise funds for many juniors and youth rugby players, then I'm more than keen to be there. And in fact, late almost, I will be assisting in an event that will raise funds for junior rugby in Swindon as a whole. Those are the charities. A few final thoughts, saying speaking at this moment, probably three particular thoughts. I'm proud to be a member of this council and have been a member for many years. And thinking back across twenty-seven years, if I look to Stratford, I was delighted to assist in getting the Sainsbury supermarket into Stratford. If I look across to Westwinds, I'm delighted to have protected Shore Forest and got a big field on the top of Shore Forest. And finally, with a slight smile, having put a sizable amount of work into Lidget Park, putting a lake back in Lidget for Sun Triumph Resort. With those three things on, years of experience in mind, I'm proud to be a member of this council. And as mayor, I will assume, in fact, I will take it for granted that each and every one of you is and will be acting with honesty, sincerity and integrity, and I take that for granted. And that is what is to be expected of a Swindon councillor. Secondly, having had many years of public service, I've looked back across the years in this council chamber and seen a remarkable amount of friction. I hope that in the succeeding year, we can take opportunities to actually have a bit of fun with politics, but also to work together for the better of Swindon, because compared to nineteen eighty-three, when one or two of us joined, the available finances are far, far tighter than they ever were before. And we've got to do as much as we can with as little as we've got. And I think that can only be made better by working together as a unit and as a council, and showing up honour and integrity together on a great many fronts. Finally, I'm delighted to be mayor of Swindon after all these years, and it's a time and opportunity for me to go to work with you. I will say to each and every one of you, if I can be of any help or assistance to you in my mayorial year, please ask. Thank you very much.
Will you support your motion, Mr Mayor?
I hope that when there's a unified vote, I'll be able to support it with enthusiasm. Thank you very much. I now call upon councillor Michael Dickinson to give a virtual thanks for the outgoing mayor and a great friend of mine, Mick Bray.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As we lose one Westwinds councillor to be mayor, we gain another, and a fourth fellow ward councillor, Mick Bray. So Mick, welcome back to a wall of your new and group. I hope you've had a very enjoyable year. I won't spend too long regarding every event, but I think one does deserve special mention, your trip to the House of Parliament. Ruth had one or two small incidents over the year, and one of which ended up in wheelchair. So Mick did have the honour of having to push Ruth in her wheelchair into the House of, into Buckingham Palace, where, yes, there was one adopted to this, he did get to meet the royalty because of it, and they came up to him to approach him and ask him as well. So I hope, Mick, you've had a very enjoyable year and a very productive year as mayor, and thank you very much indeed for everything you've done.
I'd like to ask them briefly as their guests speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mick and Ruth, I think you've had a fantastic year. I've seen you at a number of events, and what has struck me is how committed you've been to the roles that you carry out on behalf of residents of Swindon this year. You've carried them out with great distinction and commitment, and I think as a result of that, you've garnered a deep amount of respect in all areas of the town and the communities. You've been great that much of Swindon, attended many events outside of the borough as well as inside the borough. And I'd like to say, I think you've done the entire council, but all the people of Swindon proud during the last year. And so on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank you for your service and dedication.
Councillor Grant.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo separately the council about Mick and Ruth's mayor all the year. I think it's been very successful, I think you've been very active obviously with the community, I think it's the community that benefits from that. I'd like to say a few words about your chairing of this particular body, and I think you've done your best given the circumstances. And I hope that as the new mayor said, it might be slightly, slightly more, slightly easier this year to chair. I'd like to thank your two stand guys, one, the bar solicitor, I think is stood by you and you to advise, and your other one, probably not quite so, not quite so worldly, the council small, who is ever ready to give you advice, being absolutely the man of the constitution. But also I'd like to congratulate you on reaching a point now where you can put away those tablets that keep you awake once every six weeks until nearly midnight, so we don't have to, we don't have to sit through the council meetings that go on for five hours. Once again, I'd like to thank you for the, your contribution as mayor this year. I think everyone in the chamber has recognised what a good mayor all the year has been, and I hope you, both you and Ruth, well in the future after, from the year running. Thank you.
Now councillor Payjack.
Thank you, Chair. It's been a week for people who have to stand out, Alec Ferguson, Dave Cracken and Mick Bray. One of those weeks unfortunately, but I'd also like to pay tribute to Mick and Ruth. They had a great year despite sometimes their health, but they've actually well managed to wait all the way through, and I'd like to pay tribute to them. And what a year it's been, the Diamond Jibberly for the Queen and the Olympics. You couldn't think of a better year to be mayor of Swindon, I think, they're two great occasions. But I want to remember, actually, looking at quotes from your good self, and one of them actually is when somebody asked you why you want to be a councillor, and you actually stated not what Swindon could do for you, but what you could do for the people of Swindon. And as mayor, I think you've lived that, lived that sentence. I have done a great deal for this town, and we're all very pleased you've done it. I mean, one of the things you've celebrated this year, so is the eightieth, eighty years of anti-action in Swindon. And what you are is a great example of somebody who does that commitment, both for the actually the community and for the church, and I think there's no better escalate than that, so I'm very pleased you could do that. You're also actually at the historic league victory of the speedway team. It's so unfortunate, couldn't be the same team for the Summerton Football Club. But we live in hope for next year, maybe you'll get your chance to it, you know, this or that year. And I think you're also involved actually with the idea of actually launching a Swindon monopoly game. And of course, I think, where's the best place to lose? Wherever you may fare or park lane, I suppose you could actually, the Brummanave Park, they don't may fare? But rather than go to jail, I'd say maybe go to...
The Brantons!
No, go to a council, go to a council meeting with the Croft Residents Association, but there you are, just a suggestion. But it's been a great year, so thank you very much on behalf of the people of Swindon and of you, David. But anyway, this is a suggestion, but I know it's been a great year, so thank you very much on behalf of the people of Swindon, and of you, David.
I think the votes, the votes. So I come for the votes, please. A little council writing thanks for his year as mayor, and always wishes.
Would you care if sir, to us, mayor? Thanks! I thought I would get it. Yes, a big thank you to all who have tortured my conscience with their well-meaning words. Words which should be directed at those who give their undying support to the duties and role of a mayor. Firstly, to our guardian angels, Carol and Urs, Planners and advisors at Strawberry, always with lights for the future. Our two great confidants, attendants Steve and Graham, always spot on for a pick-up and always ensuring we never arrive only on time for an engagement. Never leaving our sides until we have been met by our own hosts. Two gentlemen we will please look into as part of our factoring, and they're only for twelve months. You remember that I use the word... And may I add this, where it's supported me in the majority of over four hundred engagements this year. It was not a suspicious start, I'm going to cut this passage out because you've heard it already, our trip to Buckingham Palace. But we got there, we were in the right place at the right time, and we met the right people, of course. The municipal year has been strewn with great occasions, such as a Diakhub Jubilee celebration with parties and the service of Christchurch. The arrival of the Deputy Flame on a day so hot, there was no way it would be extinguished. The departure of so many volunteers from Swindon to support the games, and the Parry Olympic Games. The signing of the military covenant to the exercising of the rights of Swindon in advance route out by the Royal Wilshere Governy. Okay, League Two to League One in football, it's the right direction, keep it up, good town. Premier speedway champions, our own Robins, well done. And crowding is all that success, but that unassuming young man on X-Files, that actor, Jarmay. When I look at my diary, each engagement stands out as one, as I would not have missed. Visits to the parlour of our own school children, up their schools. Visiting visitors from Belarus, St Helena, Gibraltar, and Udo, just to drop a few. Meeting those who have reached a hundred years, there's crowds of their friends at sometimes in care homes. Meeting the physical and mental disabled. Giving a better view of life by the large cohort of volunteers, who themselves have raised so much money for the less than damaged human beings. Personal enjoyment was given to me when I was invited to conduct the band at a charity concert at the Wywood, in a performance of Cliff Richard's Congratulations. There was sadness, sadness too, with the passing of councillor Norrie Darby, loved in different ways by all sides of this chamber, and also with the demonstrated at her memorial service. I cannot conclude without reference to our visit to Saltskitter, under the guidance of Dr Henry, which also included a visit to Verli. It was superb. I was also paid tribute to councillor Kevin Small, a supreme travel manager, who is held in such high esteem by the people of Saltskitter, in particular the Lord Mayor family. Coming down to earth for council meetings, I must sincerely thank Sting and Taylor on my right. Stanley Walers etc. are not easily learned, as to whether we put in the right motion to the vote. I felt at times I could parrot, but without the right accent. However, thanks to him, the right motions always went through in the end. My apologies to councillor Julie Wright, very important. What never did get evolved was up and called government. Think back, I think we've raised that. Volunteering has been my catchword this year, and I've seen Ted Yolick, thank you. However, due to depression, my charities along with others have suffered, yet to get a final figure, it will be just over four thousand pounds. Mr Mayor, Mayra and I wish you and Mary a very enjoyable year of office, which will give you a deeper view into the life and people of Swindon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Nick, it's been a wonderful year. Now I'll move to the next item, now item three. To elect a qualified person to be deputy mayor of the borough for the ensuing municipal year. I look to Joe Train, councillor Joe Train.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Theresa Page.
Joe.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second that nomination, please.
Did you have time to look? Thank you very much. Can I move the resolution?
Can I move the resolution that councillor Theresa Page be deputy mayor of the borough for the ensuing year? All those in favour, please.
Thank you very much indeed. You now actually find that Theresa Page is voted...
Is voted deputy mayor for the ensuing year. Does Councillor Grant wish to speak in support? No? I therefore declare councillor Theresa Page duly elected deputy mayor of the borough of Swindon for the ensuing municipal year. I congratulate councillor Theresa Page on that appointment.
Thank you. Would Theresa Page care to respond?
Ah, there you are, lost you.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank my fellow councillors, my meeting with Jim Grant, not very well that I learnt to speak for myself. I would like to thank all my fellow councillors for giving me the opportunity and the honour to be deputy mayor of Swindon. Do you want to do it again? I would like to thank all my fellow councillors for giving you the opportunity and the honour to serve as deputy mayor of Swindon. And I will do my best to support the mayor, councillor Nick Martin, in his duties. I look forward to carrying out my duties as your deputy mayor, and I will do that to the best of my ability. And again, thank you all very much, I look forward to being part of the chain gang.
Thank you, Theresa, and I definitely look forward to working with another Stratsan councillor. Ladies and gentlemen, last year's mayor, new elected deputy mayor, now will now retire from the chamber, so the declaration office of the deputy mayor may be signed. The meeting is therefore adjourned for about five minutes. Thank you very much.